Hey, everybody. It is Saturday PM on Monday, May 23rd. Regular Commission meeting with James Donald Public Service. Your commission, please rise and let's move to our opening exercise. Emily Father, thank you for the gift of the day. Thank you for every good thing that's in our lives that goes unnoticed. In this approaching Memorial Day weekend, we also want to remember those who graciously gave their lives so we can live in this free country. And to those who have fought and those who are still fighting, we admire your courage and appreciate your sacrifice. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please help Steve. Resurrection Administration Act. Resurrection Administration Act. We comply with the Resurrection Administration Act, no servicing any of the services provided always to you and persons in person who would be affected. Mr. Remphal, here. Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Grant?
Here.
Mr. Lawson?
Here.
Mr. Milliken?
Here.
Mr. Colston?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Has anyone signed in for an oral or written petition or reading and a heard speaker? If anyone has signed. No, she already read. Oh, sorry. No. Oh. I didn't get a update on it. I got one for you. No. Ready? The night is a very special night, isn't it, Dave?
It is a very special night.
How nice and special, Dave.
We are honoring Battalion Chief Richard Rogers for his years of service with the G.I.P. of David.
I have a proclamation I would like to read to honor and recognize Battalion Chief Richard William Rogers for his service to the James Donald Public Service District Fire Department. Whereas Battalion Chief Rogers began his career as a firefighter with the James Donald Public Service District Fire Department on October 6th, 1977, and will retire on June 1st, 2022. And whereas Richard was promoted to Fire Engineer Rogers on February 19th, 1979. And whereas Richard was promoted to Captain Rogers on February 9th, 1981. And whereas Richard was promoted to Battalion Chief Rogers, October 6th, 1999. And whereas Battalion Chief Rogers was instrumental in assisting with the successful planning, development, and relocation into the new fire station one at 1108 Folly Road. And whereas the James Donald Public Service District Fire Department is always proud to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of its employees, especially those entrusted to ensuring public safety. Battalion Chief Rogers has applied acknowledged training and courage for the betterment of our citizens and yet helped to guide our community in times of need and urgency. Now therefore, I, Commission Chair, on behalf of the James Donald Public Service District Commission, do hereby extend a very heartfelt thank you to Battalion Chief Richard William Rogers for your 45 years of loyal service to the James Donald Public Service District Fire Department. Congratulations. You will start tomorrow. Be good.
This is my daughter Winnie and my son Kamau.
That's her dad.
Y'all are so proud.
I won't miss any more birthdays, Thanksgiving, and holidays than nothing for y'all. We party in there.
That's exactly what you think it is.
Black holes. Thank you very much.
Well, we all love you.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
I'm coming, sweetheart. I'm coming, sweetheart.
Just my dear evil, that's okay. She gets a good deal, but there you go. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. You're welcome.
That's it. Man, that's it. Thank you all for coming.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, bless you, little bird.
God bless you.
Thank you.
Bye, guys. Bye, y'all. Take care. There'll be a quiz on the toilet. It's like a noun. I know, right? All right, so I'm here. Unless I have something. Yes. All right, so oral or written petition of three months per figure, and then by noon in the middle of the day. Consent agenda, pellicarian, regular forms of 2022. Any requests or questions regarding?
Now, Chair, I've got one question for you.
For the other set? Okay, so instead of asking the other, y'all want to do? Um, it's public here. Well, yeah, go ahead. Um, on the minute, for regular commission, I will confirm that page two, Chair Rappin, who has white car reflection system proposed budget. Mrs. Shaker explained that there was a proposal if it could say by Commissioner Milliken to reduce the wastewater budget by $500,000 to reduce the amount rate increase. And codes by resolution, Mrs. Milliken explained that the agenda topic is moot, not mute, moot, M-O-O-T, meaning it's no longer has lower. So I think it's important to say that the proposal is what I need, or it looks like I put the proposal down off the menu. Well, in addition to the movement, so I'll be able to prove both sets of unit without correction. Thank you. Well, welcome. Mr. Remphal?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Colston?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
James Donald Fire Department, 2022, I so accomplish them. Trixie Bowles. Quiet.
Yes, ma'am. Everyone has in front of them a report from the insurance department. Uh, we weren't in the sector last year. And finally this year, um, when I called to find out how many were dead, you know, they were told me, well, what's all that crying now? We don't know what happened. So I went online and happily and proudly continue to monitor any more people. So usually some of the stuff that they thought here, so maybe there's things to work on, and we kind of saw it on the other platform. It was the second time, um, in my thinking, so I just thought it would better if you want to go in the next five years, when there's something that happens, that all of the people are together, make that happen, while you're doing the insurance. The Autoway Group had a lot to do with that. You just remember on Tuesday, 2nd, at 10:00 AM, getting Autoway, you know, you're doing the Autoway, doing interwork over there at 1:00 at North Coast and Bottom Hill, and that is bringing non-pleasant on. But I remember the past five, when I come on here, so mainly for the second round, it was great to finally have, um, non-pleasant on board and, uh, the Autoway Group and your support for getting the Autoway that's been helping me, um, easily help, um, through all this.
Thank you.
Yes, certainly. There's something five and two, one or ten after.
Yes.
Every time I'm back, I'm back to that.
Yes, ma'am.
What is true?
We work with the wrong guy.
Right. Aco's district manager report, Dave Shaker.
All right, so we got lots going on tonight. Um, there's a lot going on in the district. Uh, way behind Chief Keel, it's Charles C. Carley defending the commission meeting tonight, uh, so the commission can put a face to the name of the district's newest county manager. Charles has extended extensive accounting experience, and she's a resident and member of James Island, who also is a very capable commute to San Antonio. Very excited for the commission to have a face with Charles's name, and, uh, we're getting her quickly acclimated to the accounting software so she can close the year and start preparing for the audit. So as soon as we done with the budget, we close the year and start getting prepared for the audit. So, uh, we're onboarding her, and, uh, very hopeful for all contributions she can make in the finding of the department. A special thank you to the Fire Department for all the amazing bike build and successful event on Thursday, the 28th of April. Uh, thank you to the commissioners, the leadership team, and the staff that made it possible. This page has some of the, um, uh, pictures going on from the overhead here, and, uh, James Island, which was very grateful to receive the, uh, nine brand-new bikes for Columbus to the deserving kids on the island. And, uh, the team that brought home the hardware was, uh, W.G. Ablenman and, uh, Melina, Sandra, and Chair Clifford, the frozen bike. So we've got video evidence, uh, we can share that at a later time. Um, a special thank you to Walter and the Solid Waste Crew and, uh, Fire for the effort at the 2022 Hurricane Expo, sponsored by the SERC Team, the Community Emergency Response Team, to tell on Saturday, the 7th of May, Battalion Chief Miley, Chief and Seaship and , uh, crew, uh, the Fire Department well represented in the Lowe's parking lot. Like to see the Charleston Fire Department, the St. John's Fire Department, and a great event to raise awareness of the need for hurricane preparedness. We are headed to June, and this is the official start of hurricane season. Never too far in advance, begin your family's hurricane preparation plans and evacuation schedule. Don't let the threat of storm evacuation start an emergency plan for your family. I attended the South Carolina Association of Special Purpose District Leadership Program in Tamara, Commissioner Grant and Commissioner Lawson last Wednesday, 18th of May, in Whitewood. Now, you know the slide presentation last Thursday, the 19th of May, and just like last year, the SCSPD provided relevant information, uh, communicated by the full subject manager expert. So all of that material is in your inbox. The next, South Carolina Association of Special Purpose District Training Entrepreneurship will be held Wednesday, the 19th of October, through Friday, the 21st of October, from Merle Beach. And there, uh, were various student presenters last year, including our own naval expert, Mr. Tim Mulder. So I wanted to provide those dates well in advance so that, um, you can get those on your calendar. It's Wednesday through Friday, the 19th through 21st. Um, registration materials, uh, the SCSPD said that those would be coming next month in June. So as soon as we have those, we'll get those out for the committee. Um, gonna keep throwing dates at you, um, and I'm gonna try to come in chronological order. Um, I'm gonna provide you with a reference sheet as well so that, uh, you don't have to write all of these down. So I'm happy to report that the district had a great turnout of qualified architectural and design engineering firms for the mandatory walk for the fire stations number two and number one last Thursday, the 19th of May, 2022. Responses from the firms, um, responses from the firms we are here due to the chief next weekday, the 31st of May, 2022, and members of the commission can expect much more information at the regular meeting next month, the 27th, June, 2022. Members of the commission will note that a fire committee meeting has been scheduled for 6:30 PM on Monday, the 10th of October, 2022, where the plan is to have the architectural design and engineering firms, uh, present to the fire committee on options for fire station number two. So basically, there's, there's a schedule on there for dates, and then kind of my, my manager is on there. Um, so basically what that schedule detailed out is the projected, uh, remaining meetings through 2022. And you'll notice on there, uh, I talked about the, uh, date on the 10th of October, which would be the second Monday in October. Next Thursday, the 2nd of June, the chief mentioned the, um, signing for all six fire departments. So how that works is all six, um, departments show up and pass down, and time grew at the, um, Fire Museum at the Tanger Hotlets. The following Wednesday, the 8th of June, and that's when responses to the district's RSP, Superior Planning Consultants are due, and following a similar timeframe, members of the commission can expect much more information at the regular meeting next month, the 27th of June. That is why you see on there the reasons and means to the meeting, uh, for the 8th of August. And the 8th of August would be the kickoff for the Superior Planning Consultant, and again, that is the second Monday of August. Um, the next opportunity to volunteer for the district's Augusta Highway is Saturday to 11th of June, and we meet at the corner of Folly Road and Port Townsend, PBN, at EAM. Um, so then the following Monday is the 13th of June, 2022. Um, the district is scheduled, and what you'll see on there, it's kind of a double wager. We have a solid waste committee meeting at 6:30, with a wastewater committee meeting scheduled to meet in the afternoon. So the solid waste committee is not, um, scheduled, uh, just based on the nature of the update, it's not going to be very long. Uh, responses to the call for offers are due the 16th of June, 2022, to Charlie, the CDRA, associated with the Gill's Lot Properties, and much more information from members of the commission as the district goes through this process against the call for offer. Um, so that kind of gives you an update as far as, uh, the second weekdays in June, August, and October right now for, um, the meeting. Uh, what I wanted to do is kind of give you, um, an update on the financial reporting, which we saw in your packet. Um, at the district's regularly scheduled meeting last May of 2021, um, the commission approved its ordinance, 2021-04, and that increased the general fund appropriation 220,000, and the proprietary fund appropriations by 350,000. So the first meeting was, uh, the first meeting was the regular, uh, meeting, May 2021, and then the second hearing, meeting adoption was June 2021. And that was a big deal because the district, uh, did not have the commission previously approved formalized budget number. So if you look at section four of the fiscal year 22 budget ordinance, uh, there's language in there that basically states in section four, um, as necessary, the district manager of his designation will administer the budget and may authorize the transfer of appropriated funds with, within, and between departments as necessary to achieve the goals of the budget. So section four of the fiscal year 23 budget resolution has identical language. And so this does not allow me to move appropriation from the general fund to the wastewater fund, or the debt service fund, or from the debt service fund and the wastewater fund to the general fund. However, the call center within the general fund and the wastewater fund, I can move appropriately within those appropriations. So I'm explaining all of this to the members of the commission so you understand that the district administration is not recommending a modification to the fiscal year 22 appropriation. And members of the commission will remember, the Fire Department had the opportunity to purchase a Chevy Tahoe from the state contract. I'm happy to report the plan is to still purchase that Tahoe from the original fiscal year 22 general fund appropriation. So we're going to be able to make that purchase and not move up appropriation. So the fleet services director being continued to update, uh, get updated for Chevy ownership in Columbia, but the plan continues to remain to take, uh, that the district to take possession of that Tahoe prior to the 30th of June, 2022. And so in your packet, you're gonna see, I'm gonna go, uh, a little bit more into detail, uh, you get the, the fund summary and the roll-up in there. And so right now, that is recording 10 months through fiscal year 22. So that's July of 2021 through April of 2022. And if you, if you simply just take 10 divided by 12 months, the target would be about 83%. So if you look at that total general fund revenue, um, we collected almost 10 million of the 10.2 projected. So for general fund revenue through 10 months, we have, um, collected 97.4%. So it really condensed down into the general fund as far as like four months of actually getting revenue. And so after those 10 months, you will see in there that we are on target, uh, above the target of 83% to be able to collect the general fund revenue. Um, if you just look at general fund expenditures in the entirety, okay, we're at 6.9 million spent actual versus 8. almost 8 budgeted for those appropriations. So right now, that's at 79.5%, and that's slightly below the target of 83%. And so that gap in between 79.5 and 83%, that's how we have cushion to be able to buy the Tahoe and not come to the commission and ask, we need more appropriations, we need to be able to increase appropriations and spend more. So that, that's slightly below the target with general fund appropriation. If you look at wastewater revenue, we're slightly below the target of 83, that 7. almost 9 million compared to the 9, almost 9 million budgeted, we're at 87.9% of wastewater revenue, slightly higher than the target of 83%. What you will see in there, the total wastewater, um, expenditures of nearly 3.7, or I'm sorry, of 5. almost 8 million compared to almost 9.5 budgeted, we're at 61%, and that's well below the target due to two main factors. One, we have not factored in the depreciation. We have to wait until we close the year and, uh, get the auditors associated with additions and subtraction, uh, but we have budgeted a significant amount in there for depreciation. The other component in there, why it's so low, is we have not been able to spend the funds budgeted associated with the Phase Four rehab project, lining the pipes and lining the manhole. So the contractor submitted letters of force majeure from key material supplier. Now, Bob George has been doing this a long time. He says it's the first time he's seen force majeure letters in over 20 years. So basically, when we sign these contracts, the key supplier, um, if they submit their force majeure letters, then that allows the contractor to extend the time. Um, so the tentative notice to proceed, uh, is Monday, the 6th of June, 2022, and all of that is caveated on a subject to availability of materials. So we have to have the components to line the pipe, align the pipe. Unfortunately, it is exceedingly hard to get. Um, so the plan was to have the rehabilitation project of the pipes and the manhole already well underway. Members of the commission will continue remaining informed of the progress of the rehab project. So if there continues to be supply chain shipping delays and impacts upon the material manufacturers, the contracts, the contractors can't get to perform the work. And so this could cause further delays past the 6th of June, 2022. So this would be an example of kind of an unpersuaded circumstance where the district would need potentially amend the fiscal year 23 budget because the projected expenditures or budgeted for fiscal year 22 could not be completed by the 30th of June, 2022. So unfortunately, we're kind of in a holding pattern on the rehab, uh, of the pipes and the manhole until the contractors can actually get their hands on the material. So, um, you know, this is a, um, fiscal year 23 budget, and it might be during the holidays, maybe this time next year, when we come and say, look, things changed from the plan as far as fiscal year 23, and, uh, be able to present to the commission, this is why we need to amend appropriations. But basically, what you see, overall wastewater expenditures, you see the vast majority of that gap of 3, almost 3.4 million, that difference, 2.9, over 2.9 million of that is due to the wastewater operation or the expenditures in O215. So I just want to kind of tee that up so you understand, um, there are moving parts there as far as revenue and expenditures can be pointed out.
If you look at page, um, everybody in here in line pay, 24. You guys, Fire Department, it's going to be page seven of nine. I just want to ask, Dave, if you look on page seven, starting almost halfway down, where the district's like in the art, handling the fall, and, and list, all these things that we haven't expended any funds for, our heat, all the projects that we're talking about, not the debt service, that project cost here, uh, HCR replacement, a pump station for the trees, train track, you know, all these things that we have.
That's debt service. So like you see, O2101, 53807, that was, uh, 2010, Schooner Road project.
Oh, okay. But all that's debt service.
Right.
And then CS.
Right.
And then, okay, so our project that we have that's working on and our operation?
Right, so O2150, and what you're seeing on there is, um...
Five eight.
So if you go to, SRF project. So, um, yeah, page 9.
Page nine.
Yeah, so you see the depreciation. So there's one point, we still have standing in there, um, SRF project, let's see here, uh, Northern Finings Super Project. So we already spent 131,000, that's the small repair. And then, let's see here.
Can you follow the call, sir? Let's see.
I have to go further in terms of...
I mean, I didn't know I was going to be debt service. And the friends that are coming in from the crowd, they're really staying on their blood, or is there more to the next?
Right.
There's only change. I'll be there.
That's debt service, so like you see, O210153807, that was, uh, 2010, Schooner Road project.
Oh, okay, but all that's debt service.
Right.
And it's the S.
Right.
And then, okay, so our project that we have that's working on and are operational.
Right, so O2150, and what you're seeing on there is, um... So if you go to, SRF project, so, um, yeah, page nine.
Page nine.
Yeah, I, yeah, so you see depreciation, so there's 1.3 still outstanding in there, um, SRF project, let's see here, Northern Finings Super Project, so we already spent 131,000 after the small repair, and then, let's see here... I have to go further in the funding.
That's fine, I mean, I didn't realize it was gonna be debt somebody. And the friends that are coming in the crowd, they're really staying on the road, or is it just more of the next?
Right. Cause I'll be changing.
Uh, I'm making a motion to go to reject this session. And, um, then we'll... Mr. Brownshaw.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Grant.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Milken.
Yes.
Mr. Postle.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Are we back on? With exited executive session, we've got advice on a legal matter, no action. So we are back at our regular, regular commission meeting, going on to item number nine, which is SVP has full proposal for 318 grant funding. I make a motion that we approve or revise application. Correct. The session. Welcome, welcome. Mr. Brownshaw.
Yes.
Mr. Postle.
Yes.
Mr. Grant.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Milken.
Yes.
Mr. Postle.
Yes.
Mr. Wood. Committeeing, JR, KFC, Representative for Development, we have a name of the district budget now, or if that's private, our committee meetings, which is where all the work should take place, was, um, corresponded in our roof paper, are the ones that was on.
Yeah, it was just, uh, BZA case, it was, uh, centered the district, and so, uh, we put the determination to the, um, even the acting.
Okay, oral recognition, is anybody signed up? Is this a very?
No.
I make a motion to, uh, regular, uh, station, and welcome, welcome. Mr. Brownshaw.
Yes.
Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Grant.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Milken.
Yes.
Mr. Postle.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Voting, very, very. Me, here, thank y'all.